We're back in open session. Discussion and vote of Town Council for ratification of memorandum of understanding for remainder of FY 2015 and three-year contract I-8 FF effective July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, Mr. Wojciech.
Madam President, I thought it would make more sense for me to sit down here with Labor Council so that we can answer your questions. Try to be as concise in my opening remarks as possible and let Tim Cavazza go through the details of the agreement. And then, I think Tim is best to answer most of the questions about the context of the agreement, and I can answer questions on the fiscal impact statement. Obviously, we'll help each other out if we need to, but that's where your expertise is going to be. Just as an overview, the administration negotiating team began negotiating with the firefighters several months ago. We had numerous sessions in the early going, and the conversation was not just about how can we deal with overtime. It was a fundamental principle, an essential motivating concept of the overall negotiation, but it wasn't our only concern. We had a great deal of data suggesting that we needed to do a complete managerial reorganization of this department in order to improve its performance, most of all to improve the career track for our firefighters, to give them the opportunity to grow as professionals as their education and experience and on-the-job training improved. And we felt very strongly about that because we have a documented trend of not winning the competition for good firefighters with other cities and towns. Sometimes people have a hard time figuring out, why does that matter to me? What do I care? We'll just hire another firefighter and we'll get probationary pay and it will be cheaper and we'll still get the same fire suppression service. The reality is, it doesn't work that way. In a small shop where you have only 25, 30, 35 people, retaining that really great employee becomes a major strategic component to what you're trying to do as you manage your shop. And if you're constantly losing your best people, it actually becomes a source of evaluation of your performance as an organizational design, as a management team, and as a place to work. We didn't feel that we were so far away from the firefighter's conception of what that type of work environment would be, that we weren't going to fail in any way to reach agreement with this union. When the council decided to change legal counsel across the board, we took a break. And it was a good break because it kind of gave us a chance to really retrench and think things through from a different angle. We still had some common principles with the union. We understood that if we could find a solution that would put more firefighters on shift every shift, that it would improve their safety and it would improve our ability to manage overtime. The fundamental mathematical algorithm that has been broken in the Tivion Fire Department since 2007 is having seven-man minimum and an eight-man roster. So if you have someone who's out long-term injured on duty, and you've started every shift with seven eligible to work, anybody who called in for a vacation, or sick, or emergency, or bereavement leave would create overtime. And that is the pattern that has played itself out over the last year, over the last several years, to the point where looking at budget to actual in the overtime line, you are budgeting $150,000, $160,000, $170,000 every year, but actually spending closer to $300,000. So I'll let Tim go over how we arrived at this contract and what this contract does, but I want to emphasize that it is a fundamental reorganization of the fire department that improves the career track for our firefighters, improves their safety at active working fire scenes, does in fact maintain a level of spending less than this fiscal year for the life of the contract. So it is an improvement of the financial condition of the fire department as well as its operating condition.
Madam President, Honorable Counsel, as Mr. Wojciech said, within the framework that he described, we were charged with sitting down with the firefighters and negotiating a three-platoon shift schedule and the effects thereof. It's probably two, three weeks, only two, three weeks ago now that the council by resolution reorganized the department into three platoons from four platoons. We sat down with the firefighters for just two meetings, and we were able to work out the framework of a deal that covered the rest of this fiscal year and three additional fiscal years. And then we sat down for two additional meetings just to work out the final language of that contract, which again spans just over three fiscal years. It's really two contracts. And we've come, and I'm here to describe the details of that agreement that we've reached, which is really a good deal from my perspective and from, I believe, from the town's perspective as well, when we get into the details of it. It's a very good deal for the town and it's a very good deal for the firefighters as well. We found a way to, in just four meetings, negotiate something that's really a win-win for both sides, and I think will fundamentally correct the overtime issues that have hindered this department for at least the past several years. So unless you have a different way for me to do this, I was planning on walking through the tentative agreement that we've reached, and I will say it has been ratified by a majority of the local bargaining unit. So we'll be presenting this to the Town Council for ratification upon which, if this contract is voted, we will have a contract covering the rest of this year and three additional years. So the agreement is based on a three-platoon shift schedule. That's what we were charged with negotiating. Under a three-platoon shift schedule, the hours for firefighters would go from 42 hours on average per week, which has existed in this department for some time now, to 56 hours per week on average. The firefighter's hourly rate of pay would go from 1/42nd to 1/56th. The agreed-upon work schedule within the three-platoon system, it's commonly referred to as the California model. It's used by fire departments across the country, but mostly up and down the West Coast and California. It's 48 hours on duty, followed by 96 hours off duty. So two straight shifts followed, or two straight days on duty, followed by four straight days off duty. When this schedule is repeated with three platoons overlapping one another and working this rotating shift, it covers seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and it results in an average of 56 hours per week per firefighter.
Given that the fire department chose this schedule, we gave them several options, and they chose this schedule.
That's correct. We sat down and this, there are, I would say hundreds of different variations of the schedule that we could and that we would have discussed and were willing to discuss. This is slightly different than the schedule that the town had proposed, but again, this is the schedule that a majority of the department, and you are correct, the firefighters actually put this schedule on the table. We agreed to language that after about a year of implementation of the shift schedule, the parties will sit down and discuss, not necessarily negotiate, discuss a new shift schedule. If, through those discussions, the parties by mutual agreement are able to come to terms on a different shift schedule that still is a three-platoon shift schedule, that still results in 56 hours per week, then the parties agree that they could change the shift schedule. But either side essentially holds a veto to that. So this schedule will remain until there's a mutual agreement to change it. And the parties will at least sit down in March of 2016 to discuss how things are going and if there's any variations that the firefighters would prefer or the chief or the administration would prefer. As part of the reorganization, there was the creation of a fire marshal position, a full-time position within the fire department. We agreed upon a work schedule of five eight-hour days, 40 hours per week, and we've agreed that this position would be an exempt salaried position. So the fire marshal would not receive overtime when he or she came back to duty to cover a shift. However, the parties with the chief's approval would, or the fire marshal with the chief's approval, could work a flex time schedule, where if he were to come in several nights in a row, or even one night in a row, to work an emergency or work a fire that may have gone on one particular night, he may be able to take, you know, the same or similar amount of time off on a different day at his convenience with the chief's approval. So that was the one fundamental change. Another fundamental change, again, in the area of overtime, is the implementation of FLSA overtime. And this is the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, following strictly the FLSA. This will be the first department in the state to do so through an agreement. What this means is there's a partial exemption under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act for firefighters. This is the wage and hour law that the federal Congress has passed and has been in place since the '40s. The partial exemption allows a firefighter or a community to have a firefighter work 212 hours over a 28-day period before they're entitled to overtime. It's actual hours of work, so vacation doesn't count, sick leave doesn't count. It's actual hours of work before you hit overtime, and you don't get overtime until you hit the 212 threshold. What we agreed to was there would be a cap of $125,000 in the first year, and once overtime expenses hit $125,000, strict compliance with the FLSA would kick in for the rest of that fiscal year, meaning firefighters would have to work, actually work, 212 hours in a 28-day period before they were entitled to any additional overtime pay. In year two, that cap would increase to $150,000. In year three, the cap would increase to $175,000. All three are below the budget for overtime for the fiscal year to allow some cushion if and when that overtime threshold is hit. And at the end of the contract, the FLSA would sunset. It would sunset on June 30th, meaning it would no longer have any force and effect under the contract at the time the contract expired. You could still negotiate that into the next agreement if you needed it, and there was discussion at the table that both sides would be willing to go down that road if the additional protection was necessary. But with the three-platoon system in place, with the two additional firefighters that are allowed or that the town is now able to have on each shift, the town believes through this schedule that the FLSA actually won't be needed after this is in place for two or three years. The rest of the tentative agreement, a large part of it is bringing the contract into a three-platoon system. The contract provides time off in terms of days rather than hours, so we had to spend some time converting all of the days of leave over to hours. And converting all of the provisions that really corresponded with a four-platoon system into line with a three-platoon system. For example, and to bring it into line with an FLSA system as well, there's a provision that said all overtime is paid in the next pay period after it's earned. We amended that because under the FLSA system, you don't earn your overtime until after the 28-day period is over. The paid holidays, there was some language regarding you only get a paid holiday if you work a regular 42-hour work week. We switched that to 1/56th. All vacation time, we converted over to hours at a rate of 12 hours per day. So if a firefighter had accrued time on the books in days, it would immediately be converted over into hours at a rate of 12 hours per day. The vacation schedule was changed slightly. The vacation schedule, there's a tier, and you get a certain amount of days depending on how many years you've worked with the department. We did a similar conversion, agreed to in this agreement, at 12 hours per day plus an additional 12 hours for each tier of the schedule. So if somebody had four days' worth of leave, it would be four times 12, or 48 hours, plus an additional 12. Sick leave, we made a conversion similar to the vacation leave at a rate of 12 hours per day, and you accrued sick leave on the books at the time of the implementation would be 12 hours per day. We also made a change to reduce the sick leave that accrues to firefighters on a yearly basis. Right now firefighters accrue 21 days. Two of those days, however, go into a sick leave bank. We have agreed to cap the sick leave bank at its current level, and that's a system that's in place for firefighters who have exhausted all of their available leave and maybe have a disabling condition where they need some additional time off. We've capped the amount of leave in there and then reduced the sick leave that firefighters accrue on an annual basis to 20 days from 21, at a conversion rate of 12 hours per day. We've agreed to change personal leave. Currently, there's two days of personal leave in the contract per year. We've converted that over at a rate of 12 hours per day. Bereavement leave, there were four working days. We've converted that to 48 hours. And we also agreed to put in a provision that allows for 24 hours of bereavement leave for a niece, nephew, aunt, or uncle. We have agreed to convert the union meeting leave over at a rate of 12 hours per day. Again, the sick leave conversion, when a firefighter leaves, they can convert their sick leave, they can be paid out for a portion of their sick leave, but again, that was in terms of days. We've converted that over to hours at a rate of 12 hours per day. And other provisions, emergency leave under the contract, firefighters currently get three days of emergency leave. We converted that to hours at a rate of 12 hours per day, but then we tacked on an additional 12 to make it 48 hours of emergency leave. And the chief has the final call on whether or not emergency leave is granted. The parties have agreed to rebid the schedule or the assignments within the schedule. The chief is, I had a conversation with the chief earlier today, and he can get that rolling as early as tomorrow, and he will get that rolling as early as tomorrow. He said he has the entire plan laid out. The other major provisions that we've agreed to are with respect to salaries and the fire marshal, and I'll agree, and some other staffing changes. I'll start with the salaries, just to go in chronological order of the tentative agreement. What we've agreed to do here in moving to the 56-hour work week is the firefighters are saying, we will work 33% more hours. Right now, they work 42 hours. They will be moving to a 56-hour a week schedule. In moving to that schedule, the town is able to reduce through attrition four firefighters, four firefighting positions, while at the same time increasing the staffing on each of the three platoons, because you essentially take one of the platoons and you scatter them out amongst the three. But you can also reduce by four full positions. So we, in light of the increased hours that are worked, the firefighters asked for dollar for dollar or hour for hour pay increases. They said, can you please keep our hourly rate the same? That would have resulted in a 33% increase in pay, which the town was unwilling to do. What we were willing to do and able to do, and the numbers actually work out, is on day one of the implementation, which will occur on June 30th of 2015, right before the end of, right before this current fiscal year ends, is to put 8% back into base salaries. So essentially firefighters are working 33% more, and their pay will go up 8%. So not the full 33% that they were asking for from their perspective. They're still down 25%. Year two, the increase would be 4%, and year two would be July 1 of 2016. Base salaries would go up by another 4%. Year three, July 1 of 2017, base salaries would go up by 5%. And then on the last day of the contract, salaries would go up by 2%. That's not something that impacts that fiscal year, but it is a pay increase that would kick in on the very last day of the contract. With respect to the fire marshal position that was created, we've agreed to, and this is a position that has been worked by firefighters on an overtime basis, so at a time and a half rate, we've agreed to put in a full-time professional fire marshal. And the fire marshal would track the captain's salary from day one of the contract. And with respect to the fire marshal, we spent quite a bit, we had quite a bit of discussion on the qualifications, and the chief set the qualifications and the firefighters agreed to it. We did have quite a bit of discussion. We want to make sure, and the town wants to ensure, that this position is filled with the most qualified individual in light of some economic development that may be coming down the pipe. This is a very important position the town foresees in the town, with or without the economic development. So the five years of service, minimum qualification, valid Assistant Deputy State Fire Marshal license, you would have to have NFPA firefighter one and two certifications, NFPA Hazmat Awareness certification, Rhode Island Fire Alarm License or equivalent thereof, because that's something that the state may be moving away from very soon, so we wanted to cover that. These are all the, at least the basic qualifications for the position. We agreed that the fire marshal would not hold rank, would not hold the rank of captain or lieutenant, even if a captain or lieutenant goes into that position, the rank would be rank of fire marshal, so that there's not a confusion on the chain of command. You have your line chain of command, and then there's a fire marshal, which is really a separate office of the department. The initial selection of the fire marshal would be based on those criteria, and it would be strict seniority for the initial selection. And you have four qualified individuals that have been working that, again, on an overtime basis, but they've been working that for how long?
Years.
Several years. So you have four qualified individuals that could take that, any one of them would be, could take that position. So what we agreed to, at least for the first selection, that it would be by strict seniority. Thereafter, there would be a test. Even if, whenever that first fire marshal vacates, whether it's for voluntary separation, retirement, whatever the case may be, it would be a test with 70% based on a written exam, 30% of the test based on an oral board. And the oral board would be made up of three members. One member selected by the chief, one member selected by the union, and then one member selected by the two members. If the two members can't reach agreement, the tiebreaker would go to the state fire marshal's office, and the state fire marshal would actually select the neutral, if you would, on the oral board. The other pieces that we had agreed to with the fire marshal, just some clarification in the contract, that the fire marshal would receive holiday pay, and the fire marshal would not have his or her leave converted over at a 12-hour-per-day basis, because it would be an eight-hour position. So we agreed that it would be an eight-hour-per-day conversion, same as, all of the same leaves that we've already discussed, they would be converted at eight hours per day. With vacation, just like the line personnel had that additional 12 hours tacked on, there would be an additional eight hours tacked on. So the fire marshal would actually have a reduction in vacation from what he or she has right now as a line firefighter. Whatever he had under the schedule would be converted at eight hours per day plus an additional eight hours. The parties also agreed to add two additional captains, so that at the commencement of the implementation, there would be three captains, one captain per platoon to run the platoons. The parties also agreed to add three lieutenants, so that, these three lieutenants would not be added until the second year of the contract, however. The three lieutenants would, with the three additional lieutenants, with each platoon you would have one captain and two lieutenants, but you wouldn't have that second lieutenant come into play until the second year of the contract. The final piece, and this was, this took some time at the negotiating table, but it's a very important piece. The town, as you know, took some emergency measures with respect to the fire department back in March.
March 4.
And the town went, took essentially two steps. It reduced minimum manning and it implemented FLSA overtime. And the union has alleged that this is a violation of the contract. It has filed grievances, and it has threatened to file unfair labor practice charges. What we've agreed to in this tentative agreement is, and the union has agreed to this, those emergency measures will remain in place for the remainder of this fiscal year without challenge from the union. The union will withdraw its grievances with prejudice, it will withdraw its arbitrations with prejudice, and it will agree that anything it could have filed, it will not file. For example, it will have a full release of claims related to the emergency measures. In exchange, and the union would claim that those emergency measures have resulted in about damages upwards of $25,000 per month because it has taken away overtime opportunities. So on a four-month implementation, you're talking upwards of potentially $100,000, as alleged by the union. The parties have agreed to settle that case, all of those cases, and again, to carry those emergency measures through the end of this year for a payment of, really a one-time payment to each of the 28 firefighters or 32 firefighters of $1,100. And it's a non-pensionable payment. That payment will be, that's the only piece, the only payment that will kick in this fiscal year. But again, the emergency measures have taken an overtime burn rate per week of about...
Per week?
Yeah, or...
About 12.5 a week.
About 12.5 a week to something that's negligible, something that's probably several hundred dollars a week. So it's, it still results in, results in about a $25,000 a month savings. And the parties also agreed to tweak the chief's general order on the, on when, if a firefighter were to ask for sick leave under the sick leave bank. We agreed to tweak the order a bit. The chief still has the final discretion and the final decision in granting the award of sick leave from the sick leave bank, but rather than having it being presented, a case being made by the firefighter requesting the leave, the union executive board will actually make the case to the chief. The chief will then make the final decision, and if it's an arbitrary decision or whatever the case may be, if they allege that, they'd have a right to file a grievance over that decision. The final piece, the parties prior to entering into these reorganization negotiations for the several months before that had discussed several and actually had agreements on several non-monetary items, and we wanted to get this agreement before the membership, get this agreement before the council, so that the parties could move and the chief could move to work into implementation of these major items. We've agreed in an MOA that would be attached to this tentative agreement that all of those non-monetary items, and we've specified and we've laid out in very detailed language, those agreements that would result in no financial cost to the town, the parties would sit down before the end of this fiscal year and just try to work out that language. At any time that if they were able to reach a tentative agreement, they would bring those agreements back to the council, and the union would bring those agreements back to the membership for ratification, just as we are with this contract. However, with the stipulation that none of the tentative agreements can result in a financial cost to the town, and none of those agreements can conflict or contradict with what is outlined in this reorganization MOA that we're presenting to you tonight. So it's something that in good faith, the parties are going to sit down, with or without the agreement, they could do it anyway. You can always open up a contract and sit down by mutual agreement to try to reach some agreement, and nothing would be implemented unless it's ratified by the council, and it would be taken back to UN, to the membership. So I think that covers everything. And if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to explain it, and I think Matt has the, Mr. Wojciech has the financial impact statement resulting from the agreement.
Yeah, and it could be a really long conversation, so, oops. It's been a long time since I fit under one of these desks. It's been a long time since I fit under one of these desks. Yeah, so I'll try to put it in a nutshell for you. If all we did in this negotiation was give this union a 1/10 of 1% raise for each of the three years, it would be more expensive than this contract. So other than zeros, there isn't anything we could have done to get a better deal financially for the town than this type of deal. The primary savings are from the attrition of four firefighters. So it reduces our requirement to meet base salary, and most importantly, health insurance, because there's four fewer people that we have to cover. And when you look at our cost inflators, and we were hit this year with a 14.7% increase in our health insurance premiums, there's no way to predict the future, but what we do know is that because of the inter-local trust smoothing method, even if we have a great claims year next year, below average experience, we'll still see a rate increase. The other primary cost savings is in the overtime. And there are three major barriers to overtime spending ever getting out of control again. And triple protection sounds like toothpaste, but it's good for labor contracts, too. First of all, you'll have seven-man minimum, but a nine-person roster, so there's always going to be two spaces, cushion. Secondly, if you reach the cap, you have FLSA protection. And lastly, there's a comp time provision, allow them to take up to 48 hours worth of comp time, with no accrual from one year to the next. And the use of comp time cannot create an overtime slot, and it's capped at 48 hours. But it's enough of an incentive, so if the employee would rather take the time than the overtime pay, he'll have the flexibility to do so. And the way this works in our police department, frankly, it works very well. We do not have our overtime issues in the police department that we have in the fire department, and that's one of the reasons why. So in terms of the big chunks of savings, it's reduction of overtime and the attrition of four employees, that's where your primary savings come from. And lastly, and I think this is just a matter of, matter of principle for me, God bless you, counselor. There are no gimmicks. I hate gimmicks. So the EMS stipend did not change. There are no changes to longevity. There are no changes to the clothing allowance. All those little places where negotiators hide money in contracts, we did not do that, we did not go there. It's a transparent contract, to the extent that we made up the difference for the pay cut they took on the hourly rate. We did so in a straightforward way, on the salary, you can see it, you can calculate it, you know what it is. So with that, given the hour, I thought we just, any questions, Greg?
And I just wanted, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this. We've mentioned this in executive session, we've had conversations at the negotiating table. The change to the three platoons and the change to the new schedule, and maybe questions would have come up over this. It is a, and we were in agreement on both sides at the table, the firefighters and the town, and all the experts that have looked at this issue agree, the schedule that they will be working is a healthier schedule, and it's a safer schedule. The world's foremost expert on health and safety, on shift schedules in all types of industries, has analyzed this schedule in comparison to the current schedule that the firefighters work, and has concluded that it is a safer and healthier schedule for firefighters. The only study that's ever been completed and done, a scientific study comparing the four-platoon, the 10-14 schedule with a 24-hour-type shift schedule, this is a 48-hour model, but in that, in that study, a 48-hour model was also looked at as well. It showed a higher incidence of injury, on-the-job injury, statistically higher, in the 10-14 schedule that firefighters currently work, as compared to the three-platoon, or the 24-hour model that the firefighters are moving to. So I wanted to at least get that out there, because this is a, sort of a game changer. This is, this would be the first contract in the state of Rhode Island that moved to a three-platoon system outside of the bankruptcy context. So this is, this would really be sort of revolutionary, if you will. It tracks the North Kingstown contract, which was done unilaterally, and still there is no final contract in place. So I just wanted to at least get that out there, because we have had these discussions, but not in open session.
Any questions from the council?
My first question is, how long has this contract been public? My contract has been public for exactly four days.
Since Thursday.
So I just want to be clear, the reason, the reason we put this in the charter, to make these contracts public before the council ratifies it, was to give the public a chance to review and come in and comment. So I just, I object to how quickly we're voting on this.
The charter states...
I remember why the provision was put in. It was to give the people a chance to look at the contracts and respond to the council. That's, over here, now. This is the first time I think I've seen a contract with the overtime built into the contract. Generally, our budget committee determines, based on prior years, how much overtime we need. So I was wondering why this overtime number's built into the contract, and why they increase over the years if we're controlling overtime?
First of all, it's not a budget document. It sets a cap.
Yep.
A cap beyond which the legal status of taking the time changes. It does not guarantee that level. It only guarantees that if they reach that level, they will have to take a completely different approach to overtime. So...
Well, you have to have, in our budget, if it's contractual, that means that next year, the budget committee has to vote at least $125,000.
That isn't true, because the budget committee can put whatever they want in there, and then we can transfer the funds if we need it. We do that now, and it's not...
All right, I just want to be clear on this thing. I'm asking the solicitor, please.
Okay, calm down, Joe.
And our town...
Be reasonable.
The intent of the agreement is to never hit the 150 mark, and a 150 threshold, it's really, it doesn't, it doesn't dictate how much money gets put into a budget. All it states is, you look, beginning on July 1, at the overtime expense, which is going to be reduced, everyone believes, through this, through this contract, this new structure, this new organizational structure in the department. If and when it ever hits 150,000, which is, which is below the amount that is anticipated to be budgeted for next year. If it hits that amount, then as Mr. Rocheck said, overtime would be much more difficult to get, essentially, for firefighters. They, they'll have to work 212 hours at that point, in a 28-day period, before they're entitled to overtime. So in no way does it tie the council's hands. If anything, it gives the council a cushion to say, and some security to say, and the town, some security to say, if we ever hit these numbers, we don't think we will, but if we do, the brakes are going to be put on, and we're going to go to this new system of providing overtime, which is much more favorable to the town, much less favorable to the firefighters. And the numbers increase every year, because the salaries increase every year, and because this is, this was a negotiated agreement, and they, and the firefighters wanted this number, this was a compromise that we reached. We were actually asking for 150 each year, and what we agreed to is actually put a lower number in year one, the number that we wanted in year two, and then a slightly higher number in year three. But again, it's, if there was any confusion, I apologize, but in no way does this tie the council's hands.
All right. Well, I just, I've never seen anything mentioned as far as overtime with a number in the budget, I've just, I mean, in a, in a contract, rather.
All right, I just, in the second and third, just to be clear, because I think it's, I want to make sure we understand one another. That cap is kind of like a stop sign at the end of a street. So it's not setting the amount of money that will be spent. It says, once I reach the stop sign, I'm going to stop, and I'm going to change the way I think about overtime, and overtime will only be available if you work the mandatory minimum of hours during the measurement period.
Yeah.
Which is 212 hours, which is a very tough schedule for that. So if that firefighter works, or takes a vacation during that 28-day cycle, he's probably not going to get overtime.
All right, I've heard all this. My only point was this, and let's say, for instance, this starts to work real well, and the overtime numbers only come in at, say, 75,000.
Mm-hmm.
In the following year's budget, does the budget committee have the flexibility to say, okay, we only want to put, say, 80,000 in? When the contract says they can spend up to, that's, that is my point. I just, I don't want to obligate future councils and budget committees, because I know once it's in a contract, it seems to stay in there forever.
No, I agree with you. We certainly, we only want a budget to what we actually need. So that's the actual money. But we're not, through this contract, we're not giving them an account they can draw against.
Right.
That's not true. We're setting a limit that they can't go beyond.
Next question would be...
Joe, wait a second, to answer your other question, the charter says three days it has to be public. It's been five days.
Well, my only point was, the purpose of putting that in the charter was to make it public, so that people could come out, have a time to read it and make comment on it, you know?
Which we did.
And it just didn't seem like we could have waited another week. That was just my only point. In the second and third year, my understanding that it would be a total of 8% increase in salary, in the second and third years?
No.
No, 8% is going to be, as soon as we reach implementation of three platoons.
Okay. In the first year, I understood that part, because they're working more hours, they're going to get, you know, more salary.
Right.
But in the second and third year, what were the pay raises in the second and the third year?
So in the beginning of the second fiscal year of the contract, so July 1, 2016, is a 4%?
Yeah.
And July 1, 2017, that's 5%. And I can't emphasize this...
And then another 2%.
2% on the last day of the contract.
But it's not a raise.
Well, it's an increase in salary.
No, it's not really. They, they are working 33% more hours.
The first year.
No, all, every year, every year.
They're getting the jump in the first year.
Only 8%, and they have 33.
Well, my only point is this, okay? We're not just negotiating with the fire department, we're negotiating with the police department as well. So how do we go to the police department when we're giving these type of pay raises to the fire department, try to hold the line on the police department?
If, if the police are willing to work 33% more hours, 8% more pay, I think you are having a serious conversation with your police department. I think you'd have a very good agreement.
This is not a raise.
If, if the police department sort of take this contract and say, we want this contract, that would be, that would be great for the town, because the town could say, we'll increase your hours by 33%, and we will give you back 8, 4, and 5. That would actually, that would probably result in the same type of savings for the town as this contract is.
Well, my only point is, I'm looking at negotiations with other unions, when they, they're going to be looking at the numbers, and you can say it's not a pay raise.
It's not.
But in the second and third year...
It's not a pay raise, though, even in the second...
How is it not a pay raise when you're giving it, or it goes to 4%?
Because, Joe, you're being a little...
And then 5%, and then 2%.
Joe, it is not a pay raise. I, I've increased your hours by 33% a year.
And they got complicated that first year.
Every year, only 8%. They're actually getting a decrease in pay, because they're working more hours, and they're getting less per hour, because...
Look...
If you continue telling everyone it's an increase, people will believe it, but it really is not. And I think the logical, intelligent person will understand that.
We've looked at the salary lines, and the salary lines go up, so that is an increase.
No.
Yes, they...
No, it's not. No, it's not. If you make me work 33 hours more a week...
Because, because if you have a scheduled increase in the salaries, because we're, at, at the first year, when they come, when they convert over to the three platoons, they get the 8%. The second year, they're getting, you said, 5%?
Five, five, four, two.
And then an additional two, at the end of the contract.
But it's not an increase. We're paying them at the end, they are picking up 33%, and we, at the end of this contract, is paying 19 or 18%.
Okay.
Well, it's, but just, you can't lose sight of one very important...
I just want to make sure it's understood here.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure that it's not going to cause us complications when negotiating with the other union. That's just my concern.
And it's a fair concern. We have to take a step back and put yourself into the universe of the firefighter currently. And this is why it was helpful that a lot of these total annual compensation packages was published in the newspaper, because we had individuals whose base salary was in the $50,000 range, making $100,000 a year through...
Overtime.
Overtime.
I remember.
So, but, so we're turning off the spigot on the overtime. We're asking the men, they're all men, so I'll call them men, to work, excuse me, 33% more hours, with very little chance to earn overtime, and we're only going to make up half of what we cut out of the hourly rate. As an individual, your base salary will go up, but your total annual compensation is going down considerably.
Some.
So it becomes very, for some.
Yeah.
Yeah, some, not all, but last I checked, we had 32 guys, and the top 10 were firefighters, so it's a lot of the sum. What we're looking for is stability and predictability, to at least understand why it is that these line items are changing the way they are, rather than giving up control to a whole system of scheduling that we've proven with seven-man minimum and an eight-man roster, you can, you really cannot control or predict.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I just, I want to be clear that, you know, what, how people understand, because the first thing I heard was, well, you're giving these huge ranges, you know? So I think we really need to be clear to the public what's going on. It's still a little foggy to me. It seems like we're giving increases. I, I understand it, you know, we're working them more, and we're slowly bringing their salary up to, you know, to where they would be if they were actually working those many hours under the old. So, all right. Last thing was fire marshals. I know I'm outnumbered on this, but I called the state, I called the legal cities and towns, and I found out that a lot of small departments in this state don't have a fire marshal. They, in fact, use the state fire marshal. This is not a position that we have to fund, so I'm not in favor of it. And that would be the last thing.
And to that end, I just, you know, respectfully, sometimes you agree to disagree, and the other side of the conversation is, first of all, our fire marshal is very busy. Those four individuals, in my mind, were not living up to the customer service expectations of the community. So real estate agents were calling. We knew for a long time that we were not making inspections as frequently as we are required to in order to be in full compliance. And from my personal point of view, I'm always nervous when four different people interpret the same code. So really, you get a different marshal whether you call on a Monday, or Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Thursday. I wanted one consistent voice, engaged as a professional, doing everything on time, and most importantly, that fire alarm card is in this conversation, so that the same person can sign off on the entire set of plans and not need any expert help. And lastly, there are so many proposals for economic development in town. Who knows? Maybe none of them will go. Maybe the policymaking bodies or the electorate of this town will prevent them all from happening. But if some of them were to go forward, some of these facilities are massive, and the detailed work that will be required here, and the timeframes that will be involved, will really stretch the ability of the existing framework to actually be customer service-friendly. We pretty much had that experience, just trying to do our own library, where it just took a long time and actually had to rearrange a whole bunch of things to get it done in time, and get it done well. So that was our thinking in putting forward the fire marshal position.
Any other questions from the council? I would just like...
I'm sorry, I just have one, and it's just, I know we've talked about this in executive session, but we're not, not in executive session anymore. Could you just explain... Could you just explain these four firefighter positions that are kind of just evaporating due to the contract? This is not something we're actively laying off firefighters. We're not forcing people to resign. We're not doing any of that. It's, it's designed to be, I mean, attrition is designed to be a natural phenomenon that happens over time. So just to ease some people's minds that we're kicking four firefighters out of the station.
Yeah, that's a very, very, very unlikely scenario, given the following facts. We've had one resignation already, so that position is vacant. That occurred back in March. We have two firefighters out of service on injury on duty status. They will be going to hearings at the Disability Subcommittee of the Pension Board, one on June 5 of this year, the other on July 7. Without getting into too many details, I'm familiar with the applications and the criteria, and I'm confident that those two positions will attrit. We have a position that is vacant due to a termination, which may or may not remain that way depending on the outcome of arbitration. We're going to take one position off the line to make it into a fire marshal. So we're promoting from within, which will vacate a space in the line, so we're already up to five. The chief is, I get the day-by-day, blow-by-blow from Chief Lloyd, we've got a couple of firefighters that have been recruited by other departments and are actively deep into the process of being screened. And this is sort of a perpetual problem. If you've been following our rostering issue, we're attriting two or three almost every year for a variety of different reasons. Sometimes as simple as wanting to be closer to home at their job. So with that pace, we should easily attrit four positions and not be in any kind of trouble at all by July.
I just have a, a quick comment. Going through the contract negotiations like we do and listening to the rate of increase that was proposed, it was tough for me to understand also, Joe. First day, and then it finally got explained to me on the second day of exactly how that pay increase goes. So I suggest to you that you might want to take some time, stop by the town administrator's office, or stop by the chief's office, or actually talk to a firefighter, and they'll explain it to you on how that increase actually falls into effect and, and what it really does.
I didn't say I didn't understand it. I said I want to make sure that the public...
Well, and that's the thing. If, if you're having a tough time trying to understand it and someone questions you about it, I don't want you giving them the wrong information. So I would, I would recommend just stop by and talk to them.
I understand it, you know, they're taking a cut right off of that. I understood that.
Okay.
All right, and if we were paying them the hours they're going to work extra at the rate they are now, their pay would be up there a lot now. It would have been 33% less increase.
Correct.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, we're not giving, we're giving them...
Good.
I understand that part. But when people call me up and say, how can we give these huge pay raises? It seems to me that we haven't had this out in the public long enough for them to understand it. And that was my first point. Why don't we wait and let the people digest this before we throw in vote on it? Because somebody might come up to us with something that we missed, who knows?
We're not going back to the...
It's been out there for five days, actually. Right.
I haven't had a phone call. I don't know if it helped.
No, I haven't either.
I think even if we, even if we were to field phone calls and, and by chance someone has a sharper eye in the public than the attorney we pay to negotiate and write this contract and the town administrator, the likelihood that we go back to the drawing board or back to negotiating is, is very unlikely. I mean, they've ratified the contract already. We've done this once before where we, we ratified, we, we told them we were going to ratify the contract and then we didn't. Or we threatened to anyway, a few years ago. The last thing I wanted to say is that it's tough to have the same conversation twice in two weeks, but I know that the conversation in private isn't, isn't made available. So I'll say what I said then now. This contract saves us money. It's easier on the, the staff. The fire department works more healthy and a more productive schedule. And it's an easier, it's an easier contract to manage on a day-to-day basis. We had, all had the experience of what sort of a, an anomaly this contract and this particular staffing situation that we were in, and the overtime, and all of these things conspired to create a situation that was very, very difficult to manage. So not only does it save us money today and likely in the future, not only is it easier to manage, and not only is it a better contract and a better service for the town of Tiverton, both the people that benefit from the service and the people who do the service, it will have long-term savings on our pension costs, which we didn't talk a lot about. I mean, we're going to be dealing with, you know, the arithmetic hump, but once we are over that, we have four or five, four, right? Four less people in the municipal pension system going forward. So in 20 years, when the, when the people who are my age today on the fire department go to retire, we will have that much less liability accumulated. So it's, it's, it's a, for me, it's a no-brainer. It's a really well-put-together contract, and it was done at a particularly fortuitous time. And, you know, five days, 10 days, whatever it is, ultimately, we're responsible for the decisions that we make and we're responsible for the points of negotiation. And I think, I wouldn't say I, the two gentlemen sitting down there, and Denise and Dave did an outstanding job putting this thing together, along with the chief and the, the union representatives in the fire department. And it's very rare, I, I, this is the first time in the five years that I've been on this council that I can honestly say that this was a contract that everyone seemed to agree on, everyone thought was in the best interest and genuinely was in the best interest of the town. Everybody benefits from this, all the way from the firefighters to the taxpayers, to the people sitting up here, the people sitting down there, and the taxpayers and the firefighters 20 or 30 or 40 years from now. So, well done.
I would also like to say something. Councilman Perry and I were part of the negotiation team. I would like to thank the Tiverton firefighters for coming to the table, being cooperative. It's not easy to take change like this. We all know that. And it will disrupt their lives at the beginning because they need to get used to this schedule. But they came in to truly try to help us. They knew our financial binds. At the beginning, of course, there's always a little bit push and shove, but they were very cooperative. They knew what we were up against, and their professionalism was very, very outstanding. And I want to thank them all for helping us and for accepting this change and moving forward with us. Anything else? I'd like to entertain a motion?
I would happily move that we ratify both the memorandum of understanding for the remainder of fiscal year 2015 and the three-year contract with the, is it the International Association of Firefighters Union, effective July 1, 2015, and ending in June 30, 2018, the changes in tentative agreement and impact statement attached.
Second, just a little discussion before, I forgot all about the chief. He was monumental in there. He helped us. He brought the two sides together. He did his homework. After the first meeting, came back with suggestions. And I also would like to thank Chief Floyd, and I'm sorry I forgot you. Motion's remain in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much, everybody. A motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion remain second. All those in favor? Thank you.